Call the April 21st City Council meeting to order. We have Commissioner Banks is going to give us the prayer, pledge and the fact of the day.
Let's pray.
Heavenly Father, we again come before you this evening. We ask for your wisdom and your grace as we decide on behalf of the citizens of this city, the things that are important to each and every one of them. Give us wisdom as we look at these issues and make the best decisions. We thank you for it. Thank you for your abiding protection over us as we continue to live together in Jesus' name.
Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Fact of the day. On April 24th, 1800, the Library of Congress was established by President John Adams. The President approved legislation to purchase books for use by Congress. By 1802, there were 964 volumes and nine maps. In 1814, the British invaded DC, burned the Capitol and the library, which contained over 3,000 books at that time. In an effort to help restart the library, former President Thomas Jefferson sold his personal library to Congress. Unfortunately, two-thirds of the library collection, including Jefferson's collection, was destroyed by a fire in 1851. Congress eventually rebuilt the collection and today, the Library of Congress is one of the largest libraries in the world. It is housed in three buildings containing more than 17 million books, as well as millions of maps, manuscripts, photographs, films, audio and video recordings, prints, drawings and digital materials. Fact of the day. Thank you. Approval of amendments. Any changes, corrections? If not, look for a motion to approve. Got a motion by Commissioner Velasquez?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Banksen. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Edward, any changes?
Yes, Mayor, I have one. It's just a scribner's err that I want to touch on the actual agenda under public hearing. Item number eight, ordinance 2832. The location currently says north of Kelly Park Road and east of Dowman Drive. It should be, which is correct in your packet, so your packet's correct, but I want to make sure the record reflects that it's southwest corner of Sadler Road and Golden Gem Road.
Which one is that?
Item number eight.
Oh, item number eight.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Edward. Okay, we've got a couple of presentations. I thought we'd get our newest Chamber of Commerce president up to kind of give us a little, give us her introduction. We all got to see her. Matter of fact, all the city council was there last night to greet Kate Manley, came to us via Missouri. And so, we are so proud to have her here in Apopka. So, she started on Monday and she's been drinking out of a fire hose. So, we're glad to have Kate here. So, we just wanted to give her a little background of, you know, where she's been and how she got here and then a little bit about the new website. So, Kate, take it away.
Yes, thank you for attending last night. It was a pleasure to meet all of you. Okay, thank you. It was a pleasure to meet all of you last night. I really appreciate you and your support. I came in from Missouri, but I did have a few years here. Most, I left in 2015, but I did a lot of political advocacy for my employers in higher education for several years. So, I was able to make some good connections and learn a lot about the political environment and climate in Florida. So, I'm really excited to be back and especially here in Apopka. Like you mentioned, the, it's day three today, but I did start working on some edits that are needed and kind of part of the creation of the growapopka.com website. It is live and we will be creating a marketing plan to get that out and promote it over the next few days and weeks. I would ask that, I believe that the commissioners have seen the site. If you have feedback, it's new as of even an hour ago. I was still updating some things. If you have feedback, I'm open to that. You have my email or my phone number or you can give me a call because I do want to make sure that when we invest and promote that it is accurate and if there's additional information, I'm happy to meet with you and do the edits. I do have the ability to do that. The plan is that going forward, once we've fully launched and we're marketing and promoting it, is that I will keep it up to date myself until further notice. So, we can keep it fresh. That's really the most important thing whenever you're using it as a marketing piece to promote and get some economic development activity going. And so, as incentives and, you know, new things happen, I want to make sure that we get it up and market it as much as we can.
Cool. All right. Any questions for Kate?
No, I look forward to the conference tomorrow morning at the Apopka Chamber. You'll be there, right?
Yes, I will. I will see you in the morning. Thank you.
Did you say it was growapopka.com?
Yes.
Because it's saying that it's blocked right here when I'm trying to get on it, just...
It was growapopka.com a few minutes ago.
Yeah, it's webpage blocked, so...
Oh, that's because you're in, you're using our, yeah, probably.
It's growapopka.com, yes.
Our good friends in the back, our IT guys, they don't let anything come through. It's not double-checked and triple-checked.
Okay, so it doesn't come on this. It doesn't come on the work I've had.
That's it.
Okay. It is on my phone.
Okay.
Everybody's good? All right, Carl's got it. Mr. Becker.
Thank you.
Mr. Smith?
Well, I've had an opportunity to meet her twice. On her first day at work and then again on last night. And we're glad to have you in the City of Apopka and we look forward to having a great partnership and relationship. Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Mr. Becker?
I echo the sentiment. Welcome. Had a good conversation with you last night and look forward to having many more. Excited about what you have to bring to the table, so.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you, Kate. We appreciate you coming out tonight.
Thank you.
All right. Jim was supposed to do our, the presentation on rental developments, but obviously Bobby's going to pinch hit for him tonight. I just thought it's something we should, we should at least have a little better understanding is kind of a new concept, which is whole neighborhoods being built for rent, not single-family residents versus, you know, apartments. So, I thought it's something that, you know, is we've got three I know and got a couple more probably coming that would be a good time just to do a little presentation on, on kind of where this maybe is leading us. So, Bobby?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Bobby Howell, Planning Manager, pinch hitting for Jim Head tonight. As the mayor is saying, we're starting to kind of see a new trend in development coming to the city, build-to-rent developments. We had a meeting about a month or so ago with a group, Taylor Morrison, and they said we want to meet with you and talk about BTRs. And I was like, BTRs? You want to talk about business tax receipts with us? But I had to ask him what he meant by BTR. So, he meant build-to-rent. And what that is, is basically developers who build communities for rent, and this is becoming a nationwide trend in real estate development, specifically residential real estate development. These proposals incorporate the development of single-family homes in a complex with apartment style amenities. So, imagine a single-family home or maybe an apartment complex in a horizontal fashion. So, you would have some parking around it and then a pool amenity center such as like you would see in an apartment complex. Also, there are residential or rental communities that are single-family homes though, that look like a traditional residential community. And we have several of those here in the city, including Zarebrook, Country Crossings, Benyon Reserve, and those three are now owned by American Homes for Rent, which is one of the largest national home rental corporations in the United States. And then Avian Point, which you guys are all familiar with, 758 units, which was built as a platted fee simple subdivision, is developed by D.R. Horton, but they're marketing it as a fee of build-to-rent community. Our land development code does not contain a mechanism regarding this type of development. And it appears that this trend is being driven by young professionals and young families who want single-family homes and empty nesters who want to downsize but do not want to live in an apartment, that they like the feeling of living in a single-family home. So, this is something that staff is still learning about, but there's some information out there that we wanted to make the commission aware of. And with that, I'll attempt to answer any questions.
Okay. Any questions for Bobby?
I did read the, I read the whole thing. And I had gotten an invitation, actually from Invitation Homes, where they were kind of talking about it. It was an interesting article, but of course, the concerns that I was thinking about was what's the long-term consequences of building communities that are strictly for build-to-rent? I mean, it's convenient right now because, you know, of course COVID and it allows families to move into a home instead of an apartment, but I'm wondering, what's the long-term? I mean, the most that I've saw here was one particular community was from 2005 till now.
Right.
And those are, when you sat down with them, what was, what were some of the things that they shared about build-to-rent?
Basically, they said this is kind of a new thing that they're doing. A lot of these established home builders, Taylor Morrison is specific is one of them, which is kind of marketed as a higher-end developer. This is something that they're kind of pushing now. They're starting to see this trend. They do these a lot, they sit down in Sarasota, is primarily where they've been developing them in Florida, but they're seeing the Orlando market is kind of opening up. They have management companies that run them, just like an apartment complex, you know, and that's what they've told us so far. Now, with the ones that have been approved as platted fee simple developments such as Benyon Reserve, Avian Point, Country Crossings and Zarebrook, they have homeowners' covenants. So, when they came through, they seemed just like a homeowners' association. So, I think that's the mechanism that they use to kind of regulate and enforcement of, you know, becoming or staying a nice community. That's at least what we know right now.
So, I mean, we're in the trend of building multi-dwellings. So, if this comes into play, how does that affect the multi-dwelling complexes? If people are not choosing apartments, then we're going to have a whole bunch of empty apartments because they prefer build-to-rent. So, how does that affect us in the City of Apopka? Because it seems like everybody's coming here to build. And so, the last thing I want to kind of is to have at some point, five to 10 years from now, we start to have blighted areas because people prefer not to live in apartments. Now, we have all these empty apartments and then you have the build-to-rent. Is there an opportunity at some point with the build-to-rent that they can have the homeownership or is it just strictly built-to-rent?
I think they're doing them strictly as build-to-rent. I mean, the platted subdivisions such as the Benyon Reserves, I mean, in theory, those could be sold to somebody because it would be no different than a single-family home. And then they have homeowners' covenants. But as far as the horizontal apartment style that we've seen one or two proposals for, I would think it would be run just like an apartment complex with a management company enforcing restrictions. And, I mean, I've lived in apartments where they had pretty strict restrictions on the residents and if you didn't, you know, follow, they asked you to leave.
And I think there's a little different price point. I think they're looking at, you know, same kind of square footage, 15% additional cost. So, it's not apples to apples, it's apples to, you know, gale apples to, you know, golden delicious or something.
Yeah. Well, we'll see. I mean, and so you did talk about how it's not, we haven't addressed that in our land development code. So, how are we moving forward to address that?
Yeah, in our land development code, we don't address rentals. We basically have permitted uses residential, multifamily, townhomes, and that's how we have to look at it.
So, we have no restrictions?
No, ma'am.
Okay.
And it's, you know, might want to take a look and see if there's things out, you know, other cities, you know, especially if Sarasota is kind of the leader in this, you know, are they doing anything in their code to, you know, that we should maybe model?
And I can reach out to our point of contact with Taylor Morrison and maybe if he can send us some restrictions that they have on the books for some of their communities. Apparently, their management company, it's called Christopher Todd Communities, and I think they're based out of Scottsdale, Arizona. And they develop these communities in partnership with Taylor Morrison and Christopher Todd's website, very nice-looking, you know, residences.
Mr. Banksen?
Excellent questions. And I was thinking along that same line. It sounds good, but what's the long-term effect? And you kind of answered my main question on that. How do we keep this from denigrating? Not to stereotype a renter versus a homeowner, but there's that, that homeowners, the homeowners' pride that they have in that. And it sounds like the approach to this is the HOA type of a mentality where they will keep that standard high so it doesn't degrade itself over term. I think I read in the package that there was a point where as the popularity of this begins to decline, they will transfer it over to homeownership versus a rental because obviously they want their, they want to get their money in the end. So, but I totally agree, we need to look at our own regulations on that and anything that we can glean from others who've already gone through this process. I really would like to see that.
Definitely, we'll do some research on that.
Mr. Smith?
My concerns are basically the same in reference to how will our code apply? Are we going to develop a code that would address this? And I guess I'm just concerned about a large build-to-rent community, 300 and 400 homes as opposed to 12 home communities, a big difference. And how long of a lease are they asking these individuals to sign when they move into these build-to-rent communities?
Commissioner, that's a good point. American Homes for Rent, which is doing Benyon Reserve, Zarebrook and Country Crossings, I believe their rental period is a year. I remember looking on their website. That serves me correct. So, it'd be just like an annual lease, like you'd sign an apartment.
I know, I had read two-year at least on one of them. Two-year with a renewable.
Yeah.
All right. I think we just, we need to be careful and watch and make sure that we have our ducks in a row in case something flares up.
Mr. Becker? I have nothing to add. Okay. Yeah, I just, I just, I thought we would want to at least kind of have this discussion and then we'll have Bobby go back and kind of see if there's some things that we maybe would want to mirror. Some other communities have already kind of been into this, this kind of a system for a while. So, appreciate you, Bobby, the research you did on this and look forward to coming back with some, maybe some ideas on some language. Okay. Susan?
Pamela Ripley. Well, good evening. As you said, my name is Pamela Ripley and I've been a resident of Apopka since 1984. And I want to thank you for the opportunity to talk to you about flooding issues that have been occurring in Sheiler Oaks and Lake Hammer Estates since 2018. Lake Hammer is a receptacle for the stormwater system for 500-plus homes in these communities. After over 80 homes flooded in 1995, the city was issued a permit by St. John's River Water Management District to pump the excess water from Lake Hammer to an off-site retention, excuse me, retention area. Since the pumping started, there hasn't been any flooding in the area since, for over 20 years. However, in 2019, my home completely flooded when the stormwater system was overwhelmed during an afternoon storm and rainwater came over the entire foundation. Surrounding streets in the area drifted flooded and the entire neighborhood was basically in my area underwater. Mayor Nelson was kind enough to come visit the site and acknowledge that the Lake Hammer's maintenance was the city's responsibility, but Bo Kirkland, who was Streets and Grounds Department head at that time, acknowledged that he had not pumped down the lake according to the permit. So, the system was overwhelmed, backed up and flooded my home and the entire area. Due to this, my husband and I were forced out of our home for 10 months because of the extensive damage and reconstruction. And we were told by the city to file a claim, but this was denied within a day without obtaining information from me or anyone from the homeowners' association or the property management company. We moved back 10 months later, but my husband had passed away while we were out of the house and I ended up coming back to face the next rainy season by myself. So, unfortunately, if I hadn't placed 50 sandbags around the house, I would have flooded out again because I came back in 2020 and nothing had changed. So, I know they've been, the city's been aware of the flooding issues because Mayor Nelson and the previous Public Services Director had been quoted in 2019 saying the city's stormwater system had been neglected and underfunded. So, and then Mr. Weatherford was hired as the new Public Services Director and my neighbors and I have been providing photos, documents, information and assistance in the hopes of getting the system, the process resolved. I understand that the drainage consultant was hired in 2020, but a report's not been issued yet. However, we've been told through emails that we're not to expect any report, any work to be performed this year and that those living in the floodplain should not expect any help at all. So, those that need the help the most, we're told we're not getting any. We were also told that structural flooding would be limited and not widespread, making it sound like flooding was acceptable, but occurred again, which is, which it is. After, sorry, I'm a little bit nervous. After researching reports that the city did for St. John's, we found that several conditions need to be addressed. Most importantly, we found that the pipes used to pump down Lake Hammer are undersized, making it impossible to keep the lake level down to that required by St. John's. We also found that issues with inlets and catch basins, as well as the need for more inlets, retention ponds, lake dredging and a permanent pump and monitoring system. But we really feel that minimal to no action is being taken to avoid further funding, future flooding. And I want to point out that this isn't caused by hurricanes. This is the typical afternoon rainstorms that we've been having, that we did anywhere from June to November. We didn't have any flooding for 20 years from 1996 to 2017 and then it started. My neighbor who lives has five and seven-year-old children, they get physically ill when it starts to rain because they're worried about the flooding. I have permanent sandbags around my house right now and it's just discouraging.
Yeah, I mean, we're, hopefully have the report back from our consultant. I mean, we'll, we plan on putting the pump back, you know, again this year. You know, one of the things that we did last year, which we, we had somebody on the other side of the lake, which, you know, we've already talked about, is they complained that we pumped the lake down too low. And so, you know, we're battling that. I know what looks like it's going to end up being is a couple of additional inlets that, according to consultant, we haven't gotten, obviously the written report, the pipe is not undersized, it's, we might not have enough grates or inlets to get into the pipe. And that's, you know, that's...
According to the reports that I read that were prepared by the City of Apopka, the pipe is undersized because it takes a half, it only takes an inch of water, of rainfall to go into the lake to raise it and it takes a week to get it down. So, with the size pipes that are in there. And this is from the reports that were done by the City of Apopka way back when. So, I mean, I'm going by your own engineering reports.
Yeah.
And there's no way we can get an inch or two of rain in a couple of days. And if it takes a week to get it down half an inch, we're behind the eight ball. There's no way to keep up.
Yeah, but what they're saying is that that's not, that's not the problem. But as far as the, the pipe going into the lake is, I don't know, 54-inch, I think. Vlad, you...
It's not going in, it's what's coming out. It's being, the pipe, the water that's being pumped to the off-site retention area.
To the retention area of Lake Hammer?
No, there's a, Lake Hammer has to be pumped out and the water's being pumped from Lake Hammer to an off-site retention area and that's the...
No, that's going right to our, it goes right to our wastewater treatment plant.
Yes. And it's not being pumped down fast enough because if we get, because according to the reports that I've read that come right off of your technical reports that I've looked at from the, that were prepared by the engineers with the City of Apopka.
Right. Well, what they're saying is the flooding...
It takes one inch of rainfall to raise the lake level by .6 feet, but it takes a week to pump it down that same amount.
Right. I'm not, I'm not disagreeing with you there. What I'm saying is that, they're saying that the flooding at the homes is not due to the lake level, it's due to, we can't get enough water into the, into the pipe, so it's backing up, not getting in the pipe. So, we're talking about, I don't know, Vlad, do you want to talk about it or are you...
I don't think there's a report that I've ever spoken to before, no report.
Yeah.
From my understanding, what's happening there is typically all the drainage inlets inside the roads are designed for 10 years, 24 hours, 12 months. So, what's happening is you have a 25 years' hold and then a 50 years' hold. The city is going to get overwhelmed. My understanding is that the lake is not causing a problem.
Right.
It's actually the system being there taking the water out of the lake.
And that's probably, it could be true, but some of the catch basins are, right now, are below the lake level. So, where my house is, there's three catch basins that empty into one and that one is below the lake level. So, we went in when the lake's low, there's several inches of water sitting in there. So, how is it...
It's not, though. I mean, I, I went down, I've been there four or five times to look at the...
I really will be the fourth or the fifth one of the current conditions of life that they are considering following.
Yeah.
We send people there, we've got to make sure that...
But we intend to put the, I mean, until we get the report back, we will definitely put the pump back there. I mean, we're talking about just putting an electric pump there so we can, we can keep it down. But like I said, we've had somebody on the other side of the lake that told us that we're below what the St. John's will allow us to pump it to, so.
And my concern though is that it's been, you know, the lake level was set back in 1996. There could have been sediment that has settled in the lake. So, what 79 feet is back then may not be 79 feet now too because the lake level could be, you know, there could be a lot of sediment that when they measured 79 feet back then, may not be 79 feet at this point too.
Well, 79 feet is just the elevation, has nothing to do with...
And the natural lake, the lake level was historically 71.32 depth. So, I mean, we're, we're at a high level.
I don't disagree, I mean, but St. John's is told is what we can, we can pump it down
to. I've talked to St. John's as well.
Yeah.
So, I mean, I've talked to Joe Lombardi up there and he says my emails have been the most detailed and well-researched he's seen.
Yeah. Oh, no, absolutely.
I mean, I, I can't, I can't tell you how scary it is to sit there and watch out my window when it rains.
We're more than happy to pump the lake down, but I'm just telling you that St. John's won't allow us to pump it down to the level that, but that being said, we still don't think...
But it's not just the lake, it's, it's the drainage system too. I mean, it's not, it's not drainage.
Correct. That's, that's my point is that we think it's, it's the inlets. We don't have enough inlets when we have a major rain event, that we can't get the water into the pipe fast enough.
And there may be a need for more retention ponds because that one lake is, I don't think is enough for all those 500-plus homes. I mean, everything is going into that lake and there's...
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, it needs to be, when that was built, there were nearly that many homes in the area. And so, we're, I mean, you could see the water gushing down the street. The big trash cans float away. I mean, we're, we're in desperate need down there and this has been going on since 2018. So, I mean, I've been flooded twice and last year I came within this close of flooding again and my neighbors were calling me as my sister and I were hauling things up the stairs to keep from getting things coming in the door again. And I've got sandbags around my house and I've got them ready to barricade my front door again. I mean, so it's, it's very discouraging.
So, Mayor, are you saying that, again, the pipe is large enough, but the inlet to get it into the pipe is not, can't keep up?
Enough inlets.
So, will that be part of, one of the things that we can do once we get that is to add more inlets?
Correct. We're talking about adding two inlets, which should alleviate...
So, it'll quicker than bring those levels down?
Yes, yes, correct.
The question is, when is it going to be done? Because we were, we got emails saying that they didn't expect to have any work done this year and they said, and that, and there was an email that said they didn't expect to help the people in the floodplain at all.
Who sent you that email that said that they weren't going to help you?
It was to my neighbor from Jeff Weatherford. I've got a copy of it here. It said they don't expect to help the people in the floodplain. And then that structural flooding, it wouldn't be widespread, it would only be in the surrounding areas and so it wouldn't affect too many people. Well, what's acceptable? How many people is it acceptable?
No, we, we're going to, we're going to take care. We're going to, we're going to get the inlets. I mean, I'm sure if that's what the consultants tell us to do to get it, you know, to get people, houses from, or keeping the water off the streets, then that's, that's what we're going to do. So, and we'll have the pumps in there like we did last year to pump the lake down to the level, whatever the lowest level we can get going into the rainy season.
They were even saying that they thought it was more of a favor they were doing when they're required to pump down and report to St. John's, you know, at a regular interval is what it's supposed to be. And the last emails were like, well, we'll do it, but we don't think it's helping at all. It's been very discouraging, especially, you know, when this has been going on since two thousand eighteen and then we turn around and the city can jump on spending five million for Camp Weewah and they won't do a one-time fix for us. It's been going on for years. And we're just, I mean, my neighbors and I are just shaking our heads saying, you know, what are we gonna do? Our home values are going down, our stuff is being washed away, landscaping is gone, our lawns are gone, foundations are cracking.
I mean, you talk about an inlet, but what about the actual infrastructure underneath the ground? I mean, you're saying that the water goes through a smaller pipe? I, I don't understand.
We don't have the report back, but what their, what their initial indications were is that an inlet is basically gets the water from the street down into the, the storm drain.
Right.
That we don't have enough inlets to get the water that's on the roads into the inlet fast enough to keep it from backing up on the road. It's, but it's not, it's not an issue according to the consultant, we haven't gotten the final report, but the-
It, it, it looks like this.
Yeah.
Everything's underwater, it looks like a lake. That's a street in front of my house.
Right, and so that's, that's because we don't have enough inlets. I mean, Vlad, are we, that pretty much?
This is my lawn. It's all totally underwater. That's my house.
Yeah, we have some of that old property during the flood.
What's that?
Old property during the flood.
Uh, un-, in, in the hundred year, yeah.
And I believe that's also the particular older, that the water being of the lake.
So, right.
Yeah, and I'm not even on the lake, I'm across the street from the lake.
Right, and, right.
So, my question is, what's the worst-case scenario? I mean, what would be a resolution for, to at least address this problem? I don't think it's fair that we keep telling the same residents, or that you should live in your home with fifty sandbags. I, I mean, and this has been going on for over two years?
Three.
Three?
Since two thousand eighteen. And I've been there since eighty-four and I haven't had these issues since, you know, in nineteen ninety-five, they had, that's when the houses, they had a major flooding issue and that's when the city applied for an emergency permit to install the at-first pumps. And then from nineteen ninety-six to two thousand eighteen, we had no floods. And then two thousand eighteen, we've had floods, two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty, I came this close to flooding again.
So i- if we know already that what we need are inlets, why are we waiting for a consultant to tell us to do it?
Mayor, can I add?
Sure.
Okay. So commissioners then, um, what I'd like to add is, for the last couple of years, we've, we have done a lot. We went, we went in, we, we, um, we took pictures of the pipes, tried to make sure that, you know, that we're, we've done everything we can possibly do to this point for, to cleaning them, checking to make sure things are right, working with St. John's to where can we draw down to, how far can we draw, making sure we stay within those guidelines. Um, and then what has happened is, we've had to do a study to figure out, we couldn't, we can't, we're trying, we're looking to, to the consultant to give us the advice of what, what can we do? We've tried everything we know to do, we've been pumping it down, we've went, we went in and looked at, took photos of the lines to try to clean them out. So we had a study done and like Mayor was saying, there's some preliminary talk about the study, but the study's not finalized. Once the, the study's finalized, then we'll be able to look at the study and see what those recommendations are and, and come up with a plan of action based on that. So I think it's important to realize, we've been working really hard to try to find a solution for this. We've tried, trying to do everything we can, um, but we want to make sure we have the right solution, especially, you know, because we're going to be investing some dollars into this and I wanted to make that clear tonight, there is appropriation in your budget. You did budget in this fiscal year for this study and for, there's some money for construction. So once we find out, which is, this is our normal process, once we find out what needs to be done, then we, you know, we'll be able to come back with, um, hopefully some recommendations and some solutions that, a solution that will help. But I do want you to know that it's, that there is, there are dollars appropriated or funded for this particular project. We just, we just need to know what will that, what will the solution be?
So I do understand that, but for now, we have residents in front of us saying, help me now. So tell me what I can tell her that we will do until we get this study and we figure out this is the course in order to solve the problem, but for right now, what can we tell her?
I mentioned one thing, this is my neighbor, she doesn't even live in a flood zone and she has, she has flooding by her too and she's in an adibin flood zone.
Right, I'm, my name is Aswaraala, um, and I've been emailing the city, um-
I have seen your emails because you have mailed them.
Since twenty nineteen when, you know, the water backed up on Markwood Drive and Crossfield Drive and, um, it, it's been very stressful for my children. I have a five and a seven-year-old. I mean, I have a video right now, if you guys want to see it, where my children are hysterical, crying in the background because the water is just coming up in our street, it has come so close to our door. I'm almost half a mile away from where my neighbor lives and it's not a flood zone area. Um, so, you know, it, uh, it's just to clarify, it's not just happening in the, you know, mill-run area by the lake, it's also happening further up on Markwood Drive and Crossfield Drive. So it's been an ongoing issue where we've been sending email after email, you know, when Bicati was, um, the director, he got emails, then I got in contact with Mr. Edward Bass, I know that they hired Jeff Weatherford, Richard Irb, um, the Mayor Nelson, then we started emailing the commissioners. So I, I got involved in July of twenty nineteen because that's when I saw it happen on my street and that's when Ms. Ripley got-
So, let me ask you, right, right now, what does your street look like?
Um, well, right now, it's, it's dry because it's raining.
Okay, it's dry right now. So we, we had rain last week, what did your street look like?
Well, I was at work.
We had three days of like pouring rain.
I, I was at work, you know, but when, I was worried at work and when I came home, I'm like, how am I gonna find my house? You know, is it gonna be flooded? You know, so every time it rains in the middle of the night, we hear that thunderstorm, I'm like, oh my gosh, praying, you know, praying.
It doesn't, it only has to be a very heavy, fast rain where if it lasts five minutes too long, it overwhelms the system.
Right, so that's the whole point is that we-
It doesn't have to be a hurricane.
Correct.
It just has to be a heavy, fast rain that just-
Exactly.
That just builds up too fast, too quickly.
The inlet, we don't have enough inlets to take care of the water to get it into the, into the storm drain.
I mean, I was sitting in my car coming back from CBS when I saw that, the, the storm hit. My husband called me in my car, he said, "You worried?" I said, "I'm waiting for the rain to stop so I can come in the house." And then all of a sudden it came up and I had to pull my, my car up the street. Couldn't even open the door.
So what, okay, so right now, you're not dealing with that flooding in your home?
Only until, well, we will when the rainy season hits and we have these afternoon storms.
And the concern is when we get, you know, hur-, thank God, we've been dodging all these hurricanes, but what's gonna happen when we get twenty-four hour, forty-eight hour rain, continuous rain? What's gonna happen then?
Okay.
You know, so, I mean, we are begging you, we're pleading with you, we've sent email after email after email and it's like, it's very discouraging and very frustrating not to get any help. I mean, I know you're waiting for the study.
And I've sent identical pictures three years in a row showing the same types of pictures, you know, and the, and the, after rainstorms. They look, you could, they could be taken the same day because they're the same type of buildup of water.
So right now, you're not dealing with it? And that, right now, it's not because it's been dry, thank God? Um, but maybe the, the answer for us or this, or to help you right now is when you do have the rain coming in, then I would suggest that maybe the city would have something in place that they can get to your community to help the flooding at that particular time. But right now, they, what they're saying is that right now, they, they can-
So what would that be? When it rains, what do we do?
I know, um, that's what I'm asking them.
Mr. Bass.
When it rains, what can we provide to your community to help at least alleviate the flooding?
That's what we're asking for.
Do we know when the study's gonna be completed?
Um, I think, I think within the next thirty days.
Within the next thirty days.
I think it's within the next thirty days.
All right, so once the study's completed, then how long would it take us to implement the inlets? That, that's what we need to know.
And we won't know that until we get the study because we'll have to figure, we'll have to, to get an estimate of what the construction cost will be, who, how they will do it, how long it will take. So we'll, we'll hopefully, once we get the study, we'll be able to get that information right away.
Vlad, what would it take to put an inlet in? How, how much? Thirty days?
Well, yeah, um, we, 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 but you're saying some land is created, but like now, we don't have the, the, you know, two times. Well, you know, that then we have to do some design, we create the type of, of the box or some, we create the box and then, you know, we move the problem.
So we have a study back in thirty days, then you need another thirty days to do the design?
It'll take longer than that. It's going to solve it.
I think, I think Commissioner, let me say this, let me, let's get this study and then let's look at that and see what we need to do, what the study recommends that we need to do and then come to our next, put our next steps together.
Put a timeline together.
Let's get the study, then we'll report back to the council, that study and the results of the study and then we can put together a timeline. And keep in mind, you know, we, we have things we can do, um, you guys, you know, our procurement policy allows for situations where if we need to expedite or whatever, we do have state statutes we have to follow when it comes to purchasing items depending on dollar amounts that we'll have to follow. But we can bring all that back to you, once we, once we know that this is what the consultant recommends we do, we can bring all that back to you, um, just as soon as we get the study.
All right, so as soon as we get the study, I think we need to label this as a priority so we can get it done.
We can do that.
And not to, not to use a bad water pun here, but let's not waterfall it, right? I mean, why, why would we, if, if we assume that the inlets are the root cause, why would we not go ahead and parallel and then, and waiting for that report to confirm what you all believe is the root cause? It, it shouldn't, we wait for the study, then the next work stream starts, then the next work stream starts. Let's, let's do it in parallel so that we make the most efficient use of time.
And Commissioner, we could do that, but we don't have the study to know exactly what all the pieces are. We've just got some, we, we don't have the official study that tells us it's these items, we just have-
And then, and my only question too, and I, and I know it's anecdotal, but if we're saying that twenty seventeen was the, the last time that this, was the start of this, what, what transpo-, I mean, obviously it's the same amount of inlets that are there now than was in twenty seventeen, what's, what's changed?
Groundwater.
Groundwater.
The saturation.
For that entire period of time before that.
Yeah.
Yes.
And I've reported this first flood in two thousand eighteen. I mean, and we've reported nineteen, we've reported in twenty. I mean, you can understand our frustration.
Sure, no, I, I understand, no, I understand, yeah.
And we're feeling like we're on a treadmill.
Well, we, we-
And then we turn around and we find the city saying, oh yeah, we're gonna buy Camp Weewah for five million, we can do that, but we can't help you people who've been, who've been emailing us for three years.
Well, we, I think last year, we, I want to say we pumped six, six million gallons out of Lake Hammer.
It didn't do a thing.
I'm, I'm just saying, so we, we are doing something. I mean, it's not like we're, we're sitting back, you know, and, and that's, quite honestly, I thought that was our problem is that we were, that the, the, the storm drain into the, into Lake Hammer was the problem and, and, you know, so I'm glad we didn't put a permanent pump if that wasn't the-
But, well, it has to, Lake Hammer has to be pumped down because that's where all the stormwater goes.
Correct.
Because if the lake level isn't kept down, even if you pump, even, if the stormwater has nowhere to go, it's gonna back up no matter what because that's a landlocked lake and that's where all the stormwater goes.
Correct.
So it has to be kept down because otherwise, there's no, you know, there's nowhere for the stormwater to go. So that is a requirement. But right now, there's so much water going into it that it's, the inlets aren't able to handle it. So it's, it's a, it's a complicated issue.
Correct.
And then based on what the, the pump, this, the, the studies say, they can't pump it fast enough because it takes too long to pump it out. It takes a week to pump a half an inch out.
And I know it is a complex issue and part of it is the saturation of all the land, which is why it's not just there, but several places in the city in the last few years have had that same. This kind of answers what Commissioner Becker's question is, why now when we didn't have it for so many years? I've seen it where I live, we've had different ones say that. And as I've studied, that the problem is, is that what normally, some of the water would be runoff, but some of it would just percolate down. Now that water has nowhere to go, so it seems that a shorter rain can mount up extremely quick. And so I think the bottom line is, with the regulations and the challenges we have, is to make it a priority, exactly what, uh, what Commissioner Smith said and, and that be a, a pledge to you that we won't, you know, just ignore it, put it to the side, but as soon as we can move and anything we can do in tandem, let's do. But if we can't, then, uh, you know, I, I wish, I wish there was a, a better answer at this point, but the fact that we will give it that attention and that it's not a resource issue, it's knowing we can do it right and as soon as we can, moving on it right away.
I really need it because, I mean, I was, three days before hip replacement surgery and my sixty-six-year-old sister and I were filling sandbags and laying them around the house. And if that wasn't painful, I'll tell you what it was. I mean, it's, it's getting bad. Um, it, it's, it's been difficult. Nobody should have to go through this and her children are hysterical when it rains. No, no little kids should have to look like that. And we're not the only families there that are going through this.
And maybe we can also reach out to community organizations from churches to, uh, Surtoma to the different ones that can say, hey, we have a real issue here. If this does mount up before we can act and respond, then maybe we can look at other ways as a community to not, not let our neighbors go under, literally, so. But I think if we make it a priority, I'm committed to that.
Yeah, it is, yeah, 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 absolutely.
We are, we are committed to putting this a priority because I think it's been too long and, and no homeowner should live with fifty sandbags around their home.
No homeowner. If I had some more in my crib also, I could barricade my front door. I keep those ready for barricading my front door.
Well, the only thing I can, you know, at least promise you is that if it rains and you call and you say, I'm having a flooding problem, that somebody in this city will respond and try and alleviate it. Um, that's, that's the commitment that we can give you right now until we get this report that tells us, you know, that we can go ahead and, and address it so that it becomes a permanent fix and not a temporary fix.
I just think we all, all of us in the neighborhood need help because it's, it's affecting all of us and it's affecting our property values. I mean, how can you sell a house that's gonna flood?
I know.
All right.
How can you live in a house that's gonna flood?
Well, thank you, thank you ladies, we'll, we'll keep, keep you posted.
Yeah, I have a question. So in the meantime, um, if we need sandbags because like Pam said, I, we, we had to go and bag a lot of bags, you know, if we need sandbags, who can we call that they can come and deliver?
We, we can, um, that would be, I guess Streets, I guess Paul, or would it be, yeah, Paul, yeah.
Paul?
Paul, Paul Hathaway. In Public Works.
Okay, I'll let them know that we spoke to you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Let us know that, thank you.
Okay, you betcha.
Thank you.
Okay, Susan, anybody else?
Um, Matt DeSalvatore. Good evening. Matt DeSalvatore with Creative Signs, thank you for having us tonight. I wanted to address the, some of you know, I reached out to you and wanted to thank you for your help, Commissioner Banks and Commissioner Smith. And the staff here at the city, they've all been great to work with. So I'll rewind back since some of you don't know the story. So about two years ago, Cindy Edwards reached out to me to help out with a bid for a digital sign for the city of Apopka that I think you guys are gonna be voting on tonight. And first of all, I wanna say, I'm not here to change anyone's mind on this. I've already talked to Commissioner Banksen and Ed down at the city, he's been great. And Jessica, they have followed the rules to a T. And I totally get that if they could help me out in any way, I can hear it in their voice, that, that they would. But there's just nothing they can do. So what I am here tonight to, to question are, are the rules that, that are being followed. But so Cindy Edwards, two years ago, reached out to me for our help on a digital sign that you guys wanted to get originally just for Kitlein Nelson Park. We specialize in digital signs. My family has owned Creative Signs for 40 years, still work with both my folks. Always said they had five kids for cheap labor. One of those kids. And so she reached out, she said, you know, we wanna get a digital sign, we wanna get a good one, one that's gonna last a long time. And I said, awesome, that's the kind that I do. So we walked through it, I helped her write the scope for the project, how the bid was gonna happen and everything. And then it got to the point where it was gonna be over $50,000, at which point, so this was about a year-long process where we, we talked about doing this. And I believe she got three proposals at that time from local sign companies. And we were competitive, we had a good product and everything. And she said, you know, at this point, since it's gonna be over $50,000, because they were adding a second one over on Jason Dwelli, she said, you know, it's gotta go to this national bid thing. And I said, totally understand, I'm not looking for pay, play favorites or anything like that. We'll go through the system, we'll do what we have to do. At, at that point, when it went out, we're just a small local company, we've got about 16 employees. We're not used to doing these national bid type things. So I reached out to Jessica and I said, you know, I'm not used to submitting it online, this whole thing that we do here. I'm more, I'll email a proposal, I go and deliver proposals by hand. Is there anyone I can come down and, and give the proposal to? Because I've, I've actually already generated the proposal a few times for Cindy on the different changes. And she said, no, not, not really a way to do that. And I said, okay, fair enough, I'll try to figure it out. And then, uh, we had a few office members get COVID and we were dealing with that. And I did miss the date. I, I missed the time to get the bid in by 45 minutes. And I reached out to Jessica at that point and she said, I'm sorry, you know, there's nothing we can do. And that's when I sent emails out to the, the commissioners and they pointed me in the right direction. And like I said, Ed was great to work with, so was Jessica, and I could tell they really wanted to help. So I know you guys are voting on this tonight, you guys are gonna get a great digital sign, I can promise you that. Because I helped write the code for what, what was being estimated to make sure you guys didn't get crappy digital signs. But what I am questioning is, and, and I know someone came up with this that's way smarter than me, because I went to a Apopka high school, on why $50,000 is the, the, the place where we say, that's not really, after we get to $50,000, that's too big for a local company. We need, we really need to branch out and look for national sign companies and people that are further away. And my whole point is, we talk about, I'm an ambassador in the chamber, we talk about economic development and wanting to stay local and that kinda thing. And it just, it seems like the rules that were set up to make fair in this time, this time around, ended up backfiring. And I totally know, I was late 45 minutes, I wear that and I understand that. But this one was really, really tough to take after working on it for that long.
Well, just so you know, it was, it used to be 25,000, we just raised it
Wow.
this year from 25 to 50, so we did increase it. And we do have a 3% local preference. So you could have gotten, even if you'd gotten the bid in and been within 3% of the, the best outside, as you call it, you know, vendor, you could have gotten the business as well.
Yeah, I understand. And a big lesson learned for me, I mean, huge. And, and, and another note here, I, uh, you know, I'm a Christian, I believe in God, I know he is sovereign. And if he wanted me to get this job, I would've got it. And one thing that I have taken out of this is, for about a week straight, I went home and I was just really depressed. And I was not the husband I needed to be and I was not the father I needed to be. And God really called me out on that. And now, I think when this type of thing happens in the future, I've, I've gone through it this time and I'm not gonna let it affect me in the same way, so.
Thank, thank you, thanks for coming.
Mayor, I think it's important right here to point out that we're going to do this, the, the procurement workshop that we're gonna do for our locals. Will be, that, that was, it's a great thing that we're gonna do that will actually help the locals understand how the procurement process works, the statutes we have to follow. They're so strict when it comes to procurement and local government, really in government. It, they're so strict and we have to follow those guidelines to a T or our attorney sitting over here will call us out. So it's so important that we follow that so that we have a fair playing field for everybody. And, you know, it's unfortunate, I, I really do feel, you know, I feel bad, I, I, I am all about local. If, you know, we can get local, that's, that's, that's the best thing, I think, for our community. So it's unfortunate and, and, you know, we've tried everything we can from our side. But I think it's important to note that we're gonna have that, we're gonna have a procurement workshop of our, of our local vendors to actually show them the process. We have new software coming online that we'll be able to demonstrate and so, and answer questions.
Yeah, on, yeah, it's gonna be June 3rd. Yeah, so what, so one of the things we're trying to do is we want more local contractors to bid on our, 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 you know, all of our stuff. But we also, we've got a couple other things we're working on. We have a federal grant for working on houses to get, you know, help with, with new roofs and new air conditioners. So what we're doing is trying to combine the CDBG grant along with another one called a self plus our city business. So we're trying to do is bring, bring in as many contractors as we can to, you know, teach them the process on how to, if you wanna bid on, on city business or self or the CDBG, here's your opportunity to come down and be a part of that. So June 3rd, any contractor, small contractors, you know, we'd love to have them come down and be a part of that.
Great, thank you, thank you all for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
June 3rd, that's a good day. Can the commissioners go to?
Absolutely, everybody, you betcha. Yeah, so we're, we're excited about it, we, we had our pre-planning last week, I think. And so we're trying to put them, we just figured rather than have just one for just the city, our city contracts, which tend to be bigger, this one will be for the self contracts and, and the CDBG grants could be small, you know, $5,000 to $15,000. So some of our smaller contractors could, could actually bid on some of those as well, so show them how to do that.
That's a good thing.
Okay, is that it, Susan? Okay.
Good evening. With spring comes renewal of life and vibrance, as well as a new season of baseball. America's favorite classic pastime. What a wonderful game baseball is. Easy to understand rules, a chance for collective and individual accomplishment. A contest that allows for any and all to play, including just a small number of participants who want to start a pickup game. A critical feature of this wonderful sport is the three strikes and you're out rule. We at Rock Springs Ridge have been involved in an endless extra inning game. 12 years, to be specific, since April 2009, during which the golf group, who aspire to build and develop something like 300-plus homes in our precious community, against our will, have been up to bat over and over again. Granted, not three strikes, but apparently as many as they would like. And by my count, as just one citizen observer, the golf group has enjoyed at least six strikes, not three, since June 6th, 2013. When Randy Morris, on behalf of the golf group, presented a blueprint for 180 new homes on what used to be the South Nine, mostly Phase One. Since that time, on September 1st, 2016, March 1st, 2019, October 29th, 2019, and at least two more proposals since that date, all rejected by the community and/or the city for various reasons, I count six strikes. Astonishingly, the golf group is still up the plate, up at the plate. At what point does this extra innings game come to an end? When is this endless threat to our community going to be resolved? When will the city help us to save our neighborhood? As several cities in central Florida have already accomplished. Believing in democracy and abiding by the wishes of their constituents, at whose pleasure they serve. I've taken the liberty to go to the plate for Rock Springs Ridge, just as one citizen, swinging for the fences. I will be booed by some who don't, do not like what I am doing, but that is just fine. I would be remiss if I don't stand up for my family, our home, and our neighbors. Tomorrow, April 22nd, is Earth Day. First initiated in 1970, on the heels of Rachel Carson's environmental classic, Silent Spring, 1969. Let us work together to save the green space at Rock Springs Ridge and throughout Apopka. A city whose greatest attribute over the years has been not its density, but its spaciousness. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Hoffman, hang around for the mayor's report and have your crackerjacks. You got your crackerjacks for the, the meeting, you'll be great. All right.
Is that it, Susan?
Okay.
Uh, the consent agenda, any items, anybody needs to pull?
I, I just wanted to ask one thing on the consent agenda.
Sure.
Number seven, dispersment report. I, I've seen it consistently, why do we have so many utility refunds?
Commissioner, those are refunds that are deposits. So if we've been holding a deposit for, if you meet your, you know, you, 12 months, no late fees, pay your bills on time, and we refund, you get your utility deposit refund back. So these are refunds that are refunded back to, for those deposits.
Oh, okay, thank you, because there's like pages of them.
We have lots of customers that have good, the more of those you see, that means we have good paying customers.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, if that's the case, then it's a good thing. I just wasn't sure, thank you.
Okay, anybody wanna make a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Smith?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Banksen, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. All right, Edward.
Here it is. We're back with that.
All right, so, um, good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. So the item you have before you, business item you have before you is, goes back to the discussion of, if you'll recall, the Duke Energy Settlement monies that we had, which is approximately $2.9 million. We had a workshop, if you recall, so we got, we had, we did the agreement on January 20th. We have received the funds, they're in our account. February 17th, we had a workshop, we went through the items extensively, all, all of the items that we have. The list that you have in your packet tonight pretty much reflects all of those items, there's been a few that have been removed. There's a debt, you can see my numbering, number two is missing. But the numbering, I didn't, I didn't have the number, I didn't sequence the number back correctly. So there is a number two, it just was eliminated, so. But you can see that that was eliminated and then the order, they've been kind of, kind of put in a little different order. They are numbered, so, you know, based on the wishes of the council, you know, if there's ones that they wanna fund, you wanna take them up separately, you wanna fund the whole package, you wanna fund portions of it, we can do that. Keep in mind that whatever you, whatever you, what actions you have take tonight, if there are any budget amendments that are required, we will bring those back to you. State law requires that we do a resolution for every budget amendment. So if it becomes a budget amendment in, in this fiscal year, we'd have to come back to you with an amendment. If it's something, an item that we're going to, and to put aside so that when our budget comes up, we're gonna use these dollars to help fund that item, it'll come up in your budget workshops and it'll come up at budget time if you, if, if there's some of those items that you wish to take up. So one of the things I do wanna say is, with all that we have out on the horizon, you're gonna hear tonight, Mayor's got in his report some information on Rock Springs Ridge. You've got Camp Weewall, we're still kinda waiting to hear from Camp Weewall. So we've got some things that are out there that we're just kinda still, we've sold some land, we're still waiting to close on that. So we've got some things out there that we're still just kind of in the works. So one of the things that, since preparing this item, that I'd like to recommend is, the item that you see where we're trying to pay off the debt, kinda, I, I would suggest, or my, my suggestion is to kinda hold back on that right now. We have that budgeted, that's budgeted every year, the payment's budgeted every year. We talked about that paying these, some of these debts off early would save us interest earnings or interest expense, but at the same time would also free up so when we get to budget time, instead of making those debt service payments, we will be able to use that within our budgets, for other items within our budget. But that being said, with the things that we have out there on the horizon, I think it's important that that item is a significant item and it's a, it's, like I, like I said, it's an item that we've already have, have had in our budget in prior years. So that's kinda one that we're kinda maybe just kinda hold on to those funds and keep those into reserves until we, everything falls out with all the things that we've got ahead of us that's coming. The other items are capital items, significant, some of them are very significant capital items and things that we've been trying to do the last two years through the budget process that we haven't been able to do. There is a fire engine replacement, if you remember last budget, it was critical. They have managed to make it through with this, the one that they've got now. We haven't had any issues, but they've managed to get through with that one. But part of this funding would, this is only half of that funding, but that's one of the items that we would earmark and we would use those dollars in our current budget, because we'd have to fund the other ha, other half in our current, in our fiscal year '22 budget. So that's the drainage, as you see, there's additional funding here. This is not the funding I spoke of earlier, that funding has already been approved and your storm water budget's already approved. There's already funding there, so when we get the study back, we, we have some, some dollars there. This is additional dollars that we're trying to earmark from these, from these funds, so that when we do hear back from what we can do, maybe at Lake Water, Lake Page, what we can, the things that we can do, that will have some, some funding on the table for that, when we, when we hear back from, from those reports. So those, so that's the items. Again, you don't have to do them all at once, you can do them piecemeal, you can take whatever the wishes of the council are. That's kinda, kinda where we are, but we've been through the workshops, we've been through, I've answered a lot of questions I met with you, several of you, to go over certain items. So if you have any questions, I'm here to answer any questions, staff's here, if you have any questions on any specific items as well.
Commissioner Becker, you gonna start us out?
Um, yeah, I, I mean, so regardless of what we do here, right now, because we can probably debate each one of these on its own merit, right? But if we approve what we're, what you're asking us to approve here, each one of these things would come back to us for further approval.
Correct.
For detail, so amphitheater bathrooms, for example, 500,000. That's, that's where, you're encumbering that amount, but you're gonna come back to us with plans and final approval at that point in time.
Correct, you would come back with a plan.
Because there's things on this list, obviously, I just, I need more meat to the bone in order for me to say, yeah, okay, let's, let's do the final payment, right? It's, you don't get that from just a one-liner on here with a dollar amount associated to it. So that would be my big thing. And the other, and you touched on other considerations that we have, right? It's the Camp Weewall stuff, it's, you know, I, I saw where this, where you all put out feelers for the community about what the community wants in terms of recreational needs of a Northwest Rec. So, you know, making sure that we have dollars for that, because what we don't wanna do is, because I've already seen a lot of excitement about people sharing that, filling that out. The worst that can happen is we build that excitement and all of a sudden, oh, we want these whole, whole bunch of things and then we, we don't have the money for it. So, you know, thinking about that, and in the last meeting you had mentioned about the reliability of the inmate crews and the challenges there. So we're getting into rainy season, we're getting to that time of the year where things are gonna start growing at a rapid pace. And if we're having challenges there, do we have the dollars needed to support that?
Well, and keep in mind with that, we have a contract now doing all of our, almost all of our mowing. So that was one of the things that we did by putting the contractors, so we wouldn't have to rely on the inmates as much. So we should, I think the mowing issue, we should be covered. But you're correct, there are issues, there are things that we have that are on the horizon that we need to, to look at as well. But again, these are items, and you're right, you would see them, it would come back as a budget amendment, the ones that require a budget amendment. A lot of them will require agreements, the fire engine will be in your budget, you'll see that. The flooding, the drainage, you'd have to see a plan, you'd have to see what we're gonna do for those dollars. And some of these will require an agreement, you know, the Conley property, there will be some kind of an agreement that'll have to be done, that'll to go, so it has to go through the process, it would just earmark the dollars now, but then, yeah, we would bring back whatever.
And I can respect the, the conversations that we had during the budget workshops. I mean, I, I could, I knew kinda what the pleasure of the, of my, of the board, my colleagues up here had as it relates to some of these things. So I'm all good with that, it's just I need to, you know, when we go to approve each one of these things, I wanna make sure that we're approving them based off its own merits, so.
Okay, Commissioner Smith?
Uh, I'm, I'm fine with the plan that we have. I like the idea of setting those funds aside for the debt payoff until we see where we stand. And, and what is the latest that we can hold off on paying that off? I think you said it was October, are we heading to October to do that?
For that, for, Commissioner, no, you can, if we don't pay them, there's really nothing. Because if we don't pay them, then we continue this status quo, we continue to budget the payments each year. If you, if you don't pay them off by September 30th of this year, then your new budget would, you'd have to pay the debt service on these two. So it's about a million dollars that you would have, that you would have in your budget for these two items, if you didn't pay them off earlier.
Okay.
Commissioner Banksen?
Uh, yeah, I, again, I think we talked through this, I have to say that as looking through this, I do have concern. I, I want some assurances in with the Resource Center. And other commissioners had voiced those concerns and, and as I talk more with them, I love the concept of it. This isn't something that the city is taking on, it's helping to seed something that I think will bring relief. It will bring relief for our police to be able to funnel people a certain way. My concern is, and it's been voiced, that we become a center that attracts things. And I wanna know what is the process there? So I appreciate that we have more time to walk through that. I wanna know what is the process in the organization to keep that from happening, where the funds go to people who genuinely have need and don't create a draw to where suddenly we have tense city. You know, that, that concern, and, and that's been voiced by others, others in the community. So I, I just have a little bit of a reserve until I find out from the organization, how do they operate that? What will keep that? Because after our last meeting, as I dug into it a little bit more, it, it kinda brought up that concern. I thought that was resolved in my understanding, and it's not as much right now, not to say that it's not. I just really wanna hear how that they'll do that. And the other is that the community around where the center is, isn't adversely affected. So I, I think it's a tremendous idea and can be a great resource, but I want some. So I, I think it's a tremendous idea and can be a great resource, but I want some assurances of how we're going to filter that correctly. Other than that, I, I agree that as we hold back funds till we see some of these other things happen, I think that's a smart way to go.
Well, you know how I feel about some of the items here. And I agree, the Resource Center is, it sounds like a great idea, but we have organizations already performing some of these services. So my concern is that we would be sort of the, the, the owners of this building. And if we have 26, 20 to 26 churches who want to get together and do this, then for me, go ahead and do it, but I, I don't, I don't feel that we should be investing in that, because then we become responsible. But again, that's something that we can discuss and we can earmark it and have further discussion and see what their plan is. You had talked about number two. Number two was payoff rec loan. I have everything here.
Yes, two was the rec loan.
Right. So what are we doing with that rec loan? That's just going to be?
So that is, that will be just like we do an item with item one. So item two, we've taken it out of this scenario. That is a debt payment and that is, next year is the last debt payment of 600, I think it's like $610,000.
$610,000.
That, so that will be included in your fiscal, if we don't pay that off now, that will be included in your fiscal year 22 budget of, that's $610,000, so.
And, and the same sentiment is that we have so many other expenses coming up. We have Camp Weewall, we have, now we have, like you said, we have the, the rec, recreation. We're asking the residents to let us know what we need in adjacent dwellings. So there's, there's so much going on and this 2.9 million can only go but so far. So I want to be able to use it wisely. So at this point, I saw some of the earmarks that you have here and we did discuss it. As long as we're not voting to say this is what we're going to spend the money on, that we're just kind of earmarking it until we get further information, something to, to at least say, yes, this is something that we want to invest in right now. But as long as we're just holding off on it?
Well, keep in mind, if you, if you, if you vote to appropriate it and move it and earmark it, it will go into those lines and it will be labeled as those for those purposes. Anything that requires, yeah, we have to come back to you for any, for any of them. Final approval, you have to have contracts, you have to have agreements, you have all that. But this will at least take those dollars, the ones that you do approve, and at least earmark those for that purpose only. So it can't be used anywhere else.
So, so you write the check, so to speak, but until you get the signature, the check is really pointless.
Perfect way to say it, absolutely.
Right. And that, and that's what
That's all we're doing, it's just
You're encumbering those dollars and if push comes to shove, that there's emergencies that we don't, we haven't anticipated at this point in time, that, that's an easy conversation to have.
Absolutely.
And, and let me say that, I, I think the Resource Center has been mislabeled. A lot of people are thinking that it's going to be a, a place where people are going to live, and, and that's not the case. The, the Resource Center is going to be a place where there'll be resources for citizens in our community to be able to go for mental health, if they looking for a job, employment, employability skills, or if they need food or if they need clothing. So there, yes, we have the 22 churches is doing some of that already, but we are not experts in all those things. And all of us are not doing the same thing, so we're going to house everything in one place. So they would go there for whatever services they need, whether it be mental health, job employability skills or what have you. They would go there and then they would be led where it needs to go. And there'll be people that will provide the necessary resources that churches are not able to provide.
And I think, and I think the big piece that you didn't mention though, is that we're the gatekeeper for those services, that the services that are being provided by the 22 churches, that yes, here's where you go to get your, your laundry done. Here's where you go to get a hot meal on Monday. Here's where you go to get a haircut. Here's, so that we're, we're that
Yeah, and, and we'll have a database
Correct, exactly.
That's been designed to also real, keep, keep track of who we have helped, so that we can go back and look, yes, we're being successful.
Yep.
The Resource Center is doing what it's supposed, what it's designed to do.
The hand, hand up, not the hand down.
Right.
Yep.
And I want to clarify too, I agree with those things, I just want to make sure how is that going to be accomplished? And, and just slight disagreement, I, I don't see this as something we will own. I see it as something, just like with Conley House, it's something that we're helping to be established that will be community run and operated. And it will help bring churches together that are doing part of that job. But this will actually, if churches can communicate that are doing this, it will actually cut down on the ones who are gaming the system.
That's the whole point, yes.
That's where I'm really interested in it, that it can actually help us and stem the concerns. I just want to have the assurances of how that process is. So if that's set up structurally well, you know, I, I think it can be a real benefit and not be a burden upon the city, but actually something that, that actually relieves us.
Yeah.
And, and utilizes the ones that are doing that, kind of bringing it together, so.
I mean, we have, I, we have the City of Destiny, we have Loaves and Fishes, we have Hope Community, we have farm workers. They're all doing the same thing and they also provide resources.
But, but we don't have anybody that does, gives you a driver's license or gets you, or gets you an ID, an ID to go get a job. So we don't have an, you know, that's one, for instance, that we, we don't currently have. We don't have
Mental health.
You know, mental health, we don't have, we don't have a job center, job training, so those are the things
We have Goodwill that does that.
They do, yeah, they do, yes.
So I, I understand what you're saying is that what the churches need to do is really try and get some sort of, you know, a centered, of all the churches, what everyone is doing and then they get together.
That's what we're doing, that's what this will be, yeah.
Exactly, in experience, we've had, you'll have people who will go from this one to this one to this one. And I've heard it directly from those who know them and are on the street, that they're basically taking the same story to each church, draining those resources and basically gaming the system, which is taking away from people who really have genuine need. So this will help churches to do that more effectively and everyone work together, not just churches, but all the community organizations. And so in this sense, like we've done with many things, we're seeding something that's very much needed and that will actually help coordinate that and cut down on the waste and the manipulation of it, so.
So now the Resource Center is $150,000. What will that $150,000 do?
They've got to come back and bring us, you know, I think what you're asking, I know Commissioner Becker talked about, you know, what, what are we getting? What, what's that going to do? So they've got to come back as an organization and say, okay, we need a building. Here's what, and then here's the services we're going to provide, and here's how we're going to communicate with the other, the other service organizations within the city or in the, in the greater Apopka area, so that, you know, we can coordinate, you know, the software package that doesn't allow people to, to shop food, you know, to six different, you know, churches, when all they're doing is selling the food, you know, for, for cash. So that's the, you know, the whole goal is to put that together in, as, as a, you know, as that, that umbrella and then have, have those services available and then where their services aren't being provided, we plug those services in.
And it's possible that when these come back, that it may not be $150,000
Correct, correct.
When they come back with their package.
Correct.
Well, for any of these projects, it may not take the full funding.
Right.
But that's just to set aside, so they got to work within those parameters.
Correct.
Okay.
I don't think she's completely convinced yet.
I don't think so. I, I think Commissioner's
He knows how I feel.
I want you to, to realize this, and I have done this for the last three years that I've been here. These items will come back to you. So I don't, I don't want you to think that we're just going to go out there and we're just going to go spend this, these dollars, whatever. You will see these things again, procurement policy, that's why we have it, that's why we have the stuff that we have. You will see all of these again and get to make, you know, final, whether it be agreements, whether it be bids, you'll get to see, you know, the process that we went through, whatever. So you'll get to see when these dollars are actually expended. This is just, you know, earmarking them for these purposes right now, till we get to that point.
I, I think
Okay, so the one, the one question I have is, we get an emergency, something happens in the city that's out of this realm, but we have $2.9 million. Can we tap into that $2.9 million or once we earmark it, that's it?
Commissioner, that's a good question. We have a 25% reserve, that's what that's for. Is to be able, the 25% reserve is to be ready. Should we have a hurricane come, we need to be ready. We have those reserves. And I will tell you, as we look through all of these items, we're looking at Camp Weewall, everything that we look at, I will promise you that we are, I am, we are that reserve, we're watching that reserve, so that we can tell you where that level's at, if you do this, if you do that, it'll do this. We're doing, we're, that's why with the debt, kind of want to sit back a little bit and wait. Let's see everything that we got on the table, because we've got a lot of things sitting out there. Some will happen, some might not, it, it's just, you know, it's one of those things. So you're right, these will be earmarked. Should there be an issue come up that says, oh, Edward, we need to get into that 2.9. If we have to get into this 2.9, we got bigger issues, because we've got, you know, 13 million sitting in our reserves that we would go to. But you're right, what we don't spend here will go into that reserve pot and be there and be available for situations like that if you need to tap into them. You can always come back here too for the items that we haven't spent and redirect those. So keep in mind, yeah, you're, you're appropriating it for, for these items right now, but should an emergency come up or a situation come up and we need to get into these, we could, you can always do a budget amendment and go the other way, so.
Okay.
Commissioner Becker, do you have a question?
No, I mean, I was just reiterating the question I'd asked before, right? I mean, because if, for some reason, the drainage issue is over like Hammer that we were discussing earlier, if that becomes 300,000 or 500,000, and we say, okay, that takes priority over, again, any other on that list, would you, would you just rename it, transfer it to that fund, put it in that fund line item and that pays for it?
Okay. And, and I want to, you know, I think maybe, maybe this would be a good analogy on the, the Resource Center, just from my, is, you know, last, last commission meeting, we voted on, on the RF, well, really on RFQ for the airport. So we looked at the services, we looked at, it wasn't just the highest, you know, price, it was what are we getting, what's our, what's the value there? So I think I would kind of liken the Resource Center to that, 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 you know, they got to bring us something back to make it, make us want to take it on. And, you know, give us, give us what you got and, and, you know, sell it to us, just like, you know, Adam did with, with the, the airport.
Right.
So I think that's a kind of a fair analogy on what, what the Resource Center, you know.
And, and it's a partnering, just like we do with the youth summer jobs.
Absolutely.
And so that, we're not running it, we're working with someone else who does, but we're helping to create something that really has been a, a great benefit. So if we were all taking it on, I, I wouldn't go
Yeah, yeah. No, I, I agree. Okay.
Okay.
All right. Do we have anybody from the public wish to speak on it?
We have Cheryl Manche.
Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Thank you very much for having me tonight.
Name and address for the record.
Excuse me?
Name and address for the record.
Yes, I am Cheryl Manch. I am, I live at 4539 Cemetery Road, Mount Dora. I am the Community Resource Director at Remnant Christian Center at 170 South Washington Avenue in Apopka. I do have something for each of you. I'd like to pass it out to you. It was given to me by Second Harvest.
Thank you.
Thank you. This is an email dated March 22nd of this year. I highlighted that it's been one year to the day of that date, that Remnant was asked by First, by Second Harvest, when the world shut down. Apopka shut down. There was, the grocery stores were shut down, the jobs were shut down. They asked us to give out food to your citizens, to the elderly that, that couldn't even get to the store if they wanted to. So we did, we stepped up, we were one of the five main drop-off points. And between us and First Baptist Church of Apopka, each week we gave out food, every Monday. And this was a community, I think you should know that you're, you should be proud of your community, because they would come to our parking lot and people would pick up food and they would bring it to their neighbors. And then First Baptist would pick up a large amount of food. Alexandra Smith Church, they would pick up food and they would go to their parking lots and distribute the food. And we literally fed 272,472 meals within a year's time. That was a record-breaking year for Second Harvest and we were part of that record-breaking year. That's why they sent us this email. And First Baptist would cook up the food, serve it on Monday night, but they also had cars coming into their parking lot and they would pick up this food and they would bring it to three or four different locations for those that couldn't get out to get the food. All that food, I asked them, what was that total for that food? They told me $550,000. That's a lot of money. Now, it's the churches and the nonprofit that got together to feed your citizens of Apopka. So they didn't knock, they didn't come knocking on your door. We're asking for $150,000 to do more of that. What I wanted to tell you real quick is, I don't know where that idea came from, that there's going to be a bunch of homeless people, you know, hanging out, doing drugs and whatever, deteriorating in the neighborhood. That's the complete opposite of what we're talking about. With Ben Carson, the Director of HUD, has been trying to do this for three years, to get nonprofits, community partners together to bring in financial assistance for basic needs, crisis intervention, case management, a hand-up initiative, life skill classes, disaster recovery, housing, food, food, clothes, ID restoration, emergency shelter, homeless care kits, helping seniors, legal aid, immigration. That is what we're offering to do here. And we're only asking the city to purchase a building for $150,000 when it should be about $450,000. It's a commercial building. And you know today's real estate market, that's pennies on the dollar. They're basically almost giving that building away. We want to take that building, the churches want to fix it up. We, what, we, we're going to get grants to get services into that building. We're asking United Against Poverty to set up a satellite office, because for, I have to take people from my church to come up on my doorstep, I have to drive them 45 minutes to get to United Against Poverty to get the same resources. There's, that's the closest place, there's five hubs in central Florida. And as popular and as busy as we are in Apopka, we need one here. We need one here, because we're going to be offering education to our citizens. We're, we're telling them, we don't want you to have $10 an hour jobs. We want to give you education for $20 an hour jobs. And by the way, we already have been speaking to the job placement career services for that. And they're willing to step forward and do it. We're getting ready to start an AA program in our own church, because a nonprofit in Virginia saw what we were doing during COVID and said, we want to sow into that. This isn't giving hand up, this is enforcing your citizens, getting them smarter, healthier and better. And they will show that pride in their houses. It will build, that building will become pretty. And the house next to it and the house next to it will become prettier and prettier, because you have brought up the attitude of the citizens, instead of them having a poverty mentality. We have been sowing into them every single week, month after month after month, and they know that we care. This isn't, we're, we're not getting paid for this. We haven't asked for one dime for this, because we love our community and we're sick and tired of seeing them doing the same rat race rut over and over again and just giving up and being depressed. And what, what, what Mayor Nelson said was correct. We have people, they have, we, I tried to give the resources at my church and I have them running all over town. They don't have cars, they, they have part-time jobs sometimes. They, they don't have time to be doing this. We have a Resource Center, come in, let's sit down for 45 minutes like they do at United Against Poverty. Let's see what you need. We already have the software program, the HI, HIS program?
HMI.
HMI program that Orange County's already using, and we're going to set it up in there. It's basically going to be office spaces. It's not going to be, I, I don't know what you, what you have in mind over there.
No, you're mistaken. I never said anything about the homeless. What I said was that I know for a fact, because I have gone to the farm workers, I have gone to Hope Community, I have gone to the City of Destiny, and I've stood on the line to get food for families that could not get there. And I know for a fact that they offer the same services.
Exactly. And why, why, what we have going on, what we've been working on for three years, every month, except for COVID, we've been, let's pull month, except for COVID, we've been, let's pool our resources together. Let's not, let's not repeat the same services, let's not waste the money. If this one's already doing it, let's put the people over there. All right? Let's put the people over here who's doing this service.
Right.
Right? You're absolutely right, because money's being thrown out the window. If we're, all the little ones, all the little churches and nonprofits are doing the same thing and over and over again.
Exactly.
Let's pool the resources together, use the money in a smart way. That's why we started the Next Step Foundation. It's a, it's a nonprofit, that all the churches are going to be pitching in together, donating together, so we can use the arc, so we don't, so we stop wasting money, and, and we can structure the money to go to where it needs to go with the most leverage, with the most leverage.
Thank you for our bucks, yeah, yeah. Thank you, thank you, Cheryl.
Thank you very much.
Absolutely, thank you. Okay. Anybody else want to speak? Okay. All right. Well, where, where are we at? Look and get, get, give Edward some direction here.
So, so yeah, Mayor, I don't know if you guys want to do them, you want to do them by number, you want to do them as a group, you want to, we'll earmark them all again. We'll come back if there's any budget amendments that are required. At budget time, I told you, some of these, if you do them now, they'll earmark it, but it'll actually come back in your budget. So, you're going to see all these again.
So, I think the only thing that we, from this, we're talking about maybe is pulling back the, the.
Number one.
Number one, to just basically leave that lone there, so that if something happens with WeWah, we've got some flexibility there. But, somebody wants to make a motion.
I would move to approve as, I mean, because again, we're.
Yeah. We're going to.
It's not like we're going out and spending the money tomorrow. I mean, we're, this, this encumbering and earmarking of these, these funds is, is a perfunctory kind of thing that, you know, we're going to be able to change later if, if we need to.
Yeah. So, that's a resounding, is that a motion?
I would move to approve.
I'll second it.
Got a motion by Commissioner Becker, and a second by Commissioner Banksen. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Okay, let's see here. Next up, public hearing, ordinance number 2773.
Ordinance number 2773. An ordinance of the City of Apopka, Florida, amending the future land use element of the Apopka Comprehensive Plan of the City of Apopka, changing the future land use designation from county rural to city residential high for certain real property generally located west of State Road 429 and north of West Orange Blossom Trail, owned by Collier Bend Land Joint Venture LLC, comprising 50.2 acres more or less, providing for severability and providing for an effective date.
Any changes?
No changes.
Thank you, Phil. Okay. Anybody from the public wish to speak on this matter? Sure.
Forgive my lack of understanding, but when I look at these ordinances, several of them, I see so many acres that are with the project, and the changing of the zoning.
Correct.
So, my question is, just as a citizen, when the approval, if there's approval voted, is it expected that in the future, there will be a development?
It'll come back to us.
That will require another vote, am I correct?
Correct.
Yes.
Yes.
I just want to make sure, I wasn't clear about that.
Yes.
There are several of them like that.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, you got it. Thank you. Okay, anybody from the public? Anybody else? Okay. All right. Look for a motion to adopt ordinance number 2773.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Smith, second by Commissioner Velasquez. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next up, ordinance number 2774.
Ordinance number 2774. An ordinance of the City of Apopka, Florida, amending the future land use element of the Apopka Comprehensive Plan of the City of Apopka, changing the future land use designation from county rural to city commercial for certain real property generally located west of State Road 429 and north of West Orange Blossom Trail, owned by Collier Bend Land Joint Venture LLC, comprising 23.73 acres more or less, providing for severability and providing for an effective date.
Any questions for Phil? Any changes?
No changes.
Okay, thank you. Anybody from the public wish to speak on this matter?
Just a quick comment, very terse. When I look at that, just as a citizen of Apopka, I do have a concern, because what do I see? Urbanization. Urbanization.
Thank you. Okay. Anybody else from the public wish to speak on this matter? Not, close the public hearing, look for a motion to adopt ordinance number 2774.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Banksen, second by Commissioner Becker. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next up, ordinance number 2819.
Ordinance number 2819. An ordinance of the City of Apopka, Florida, amending the future land use element of the Apopka Comprehensive Plan of the City of Apopka, changing the future land use designation from county rural to city low-density residential for certain real property located north of Boy Scout Road and east of South Binion Road, comprising 9.487 acres more or less, and owned by Apopka Centerline Development LLC, providing for severability and for an effective date.
Allison, any changes? All right. Anybody from the public wish to speak on this matter? Not, we'll close the public hearing, look for a motion to adopt ordinance number 2819.
That's a second meeting also.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Banksen.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Becker. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next up, ordinance number 2820.
Ordinance number 2820. An ordinance of the City of Apopka, Florida, changing the zoning from RSF 1A Residential Single Family Estate District to RCE Residential Country Estate District for certain real property located south of East Welch Road and west of Usler Road, comprising 4.4 acres more or less, and owned by Richard G. Harwood Jr., providing for severability and providing for an effective date.
Phil, any changes?
No changes.
Okay. Anybody from the public wish to speak on this matter? Not, we'll close the public hearing, and look for a motion to adopt ordinance number 2820.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Velasquez, second by Commissioner Smith. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next up, ordinance number 2826.
Ordinance number 2826. An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Apopka, Florida, adopting the 2021, 2022 through 2026, 2027, five-year capital improvement annual update, providing for legislative findings, providing for severability, providing for exclusion from codification, and providing for an effective date.
Okay. Brian, any changes?
No changes.
All right. Anybody from the public wish to speak on this matter? If not, we'll close the public hearing, look for a motion to adopt ordinance number 2826.
Second reading, so moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Smith, second by Commissioner Velasquez. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next up, ordinance number 2827.
Ordinance number 2827. An ordinance of the City of Apopka, Florida, changing the zoning from AG to RSF 1B for residential single-family large lot for certain real property located on the north side of Poncan Road, comprising 23.4 acres more or less, and owned by FTI Funding LLC, providing for directions to the Community Development Director, severability, conflicts, and an effective date.
Okay. Bobby, any changes? Okay. Anybody from the public wish to speak on this matter? Not, we'll close the public hearing, look for a motion to adopt ordinance number 2827.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Banksen.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Becker. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next up, ordinance number 2828.
Second reading. Okay, ordinance number 2828. An ordinance of the City of Apopka, Florida, changing the zoning from transitional to planned development for certain real property located at 810 South Binion Road, comprising 31.4 acres more or less, and owned by Clowns Farm, Inc., providing for directions to the Community Development Director, severability, conflicts, and an effective date.
There must be changes.
There must be, yes. The street ends. The applicant is requesting a continuance of this item to May 19th to allow some additional time to work out issues related to the development agreement. Requesting the continuance to May 19th to allow preservation of advertising of the second reading.
Okay. Continuation to 519.
Okay. Any questions for Bobby, or the applicant?
What is it that they want to iron out in the development agreement?
A provision in regards to utility extensions.
Okay.
Any other questions for Bobby? Okay.
Utilities.
Anybody from the public wish to speak on this matter? If not, we look for a motion to.
Continue.
Continue to May 19th.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Smith.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Velasquez. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next up, ordinance number 2832.
Ordinance number 2832. An ordinance of the City of Apopka, Florida, to extend its territorial, territorial and municipal limits to annex pursuant to Florida Statute 171.044, the here and after described land situated in being in Orange County, Florida, owned by PMDW Ventures LLC, located on southwest corner of Sadler Road and Golden Gem Road, providing for directions to the city clerk, severability, conflicts, and an effective date.
Okay.
Jean Sanchez with the Community Development Department. It's a request accept the first reading of ordinance number 2832, the annexation of a parcel owned by PMDW Ventures. The, the parcel about properties in the city jurisdiction on its northern, eastern boundaries, it is a total of about 9.86 acres and sits on the southwest corner of Sadler and Golden Gem Road. The recommended motion is to accept ordinance number 2832 and hold it over for second reading and adoption on May 5th, 2021. Staff is available for questions.
Okay. Any questions for Jean? Okay. Anybody from the public wish to speak on this matter?
This is an elementary-level question. The annexation ordinances.
Yes.
It's just basic. So, these acreages are added to the city boundaries. Is that the way it is?
Yep.
Okay, I'm just curious.
Yep.
Because there's one citizen in the city. Over the past 10 years, can you give an estimate of how the square mile area for Apopka City has changed?
Uh-oh, that's a question for Bobby.
I'm, I'm just curious, because.
I know. See if I can give you an answer.
Probably in the past 10 years, I would estimate 20 square miles or so. Probably we could go back and confirm that with GIS records, but that's just off the top of my head.
I thought for some time that the city square mile area was something like 34, 35 square miles, am I right?
Yeah.
So, you're saying it's 20, 20 added to that?
You said in the past 10 years.
Okay. So, you're talking about past 10 years, you said?
Right, and that's just off the top of my head.
Okay, so 10 years ago, was it like 35 square miles?
Probably, it was 80.
Okay. And so, you're saying it's 20 added to that since that time? Wow. Okay.
So, the math equation is 35 minus 20. Right? Is that what we're saying, for the last 10 years? Right?
Okay. All right. Anybody else want to speak on this matter? If not, we'll close the public hearing and look for a motion to approve ordinance number 2832 at first reading and hold over for a second reading and adoption.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Banksen, second by Commissioner Smith. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next up, ordinance number 2837.
Ordinance number 2837. An ordinance of the City of Apopka, Florida, to extend its territorial and municipal limits to annex pursuant to Florida Statute 171.044, the here and after described land situated in being in Orange County, Florida, owned by Donna and Carl Redder, located on the southwest corner of Sadler, Sadler Road and Golden Gem Road, providing for directions to the city clerk, severability, conflicts, and an effective date.
Jean?
Again, Jean Sanchez with the Community Development Department. This is to, is a request to accept ordinance number 2837, its first reading, the annexation of the two parcels owned by Donna and Carl Redder. The two parcels are located also in the southwest corner of Sadler Road and Golden Gem Road, approximately 10.41 acres, and is just south adjacent of the parcel referenced in the previous item. Parcel about properties in the city jurisdiction on its northern and eastern boundaries. The recommended motion is to accept ordinance number 2837 and hold it over for second reading and adoption on May 5th, 2021.
Any questions for Jean?
Yeah, I just want to ask, what would be the land use for those two properties?
Presidential. This, this property is in the KPI area, the Kelly Park Interchange, so it would be mixed use.
It would be mixed use?
Correct.
Do we know what they're planning there?
Right now, the discussion is residential subdivision, to combine or amalgamate these parcels.
Any questions?
Do we have our utilities that go all the way out there?
I am not aware how far utilities go on Golden Gem.
We're working on that. We have utilities off the public, just past the public property, and we have a deal opening for extension of utilities off Kelly Park and Golden Gem next winter. So, the next phase will be to accept the utilities on Golden Gem, which will come in about next spring or winter.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, so that's that.
So, we're going by the end of the year to get the utilities.
To get, to get the utilities to go out to that area. And, and you know, I, I am curious. I mean, Mr. Hoffman, it did ask an interesting question, like, if, when you do the, at the next meeting, will kind of let us know, how big is Apopka now?
Yeah.
Thank you, that would be an interesting, for me. Thank you.
And, and just to that, how much of that is filling in the Swiss cheese holes, and how much of that is expanding the perimeter? I think it's a combination of both.
We'll get that.
Yeah, maybe get Suver to do like a 19, maybe deck, by decades or something, just, that'd be kind of neat, if you can pull that. Suver can do about anything, so.
Yeah. I agree.
Thank you, I appreciate that. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions for Jean? Anybody from the public wish to speak on this matter?
Mr. Hoffman, I want you at court when I ever get to court.
I, uh.
I want you to be my lawyer.
I'm just trying to gain civic education. With these annexations, my sense is, for the property owners, they would like to be in a standby situation of gaining city services. Does that make sense?
I'm sorry, repeat that again?
Yes.
For the landowners, that are involved with the annexation proposal, they would be standing by over time to gain city services, correct?
Correct.
Correct.
Okay. So, then from the vantage point of the city, my question would be, is there a cost-benefit ratio analysis done for that? I mean.
Well, we get impact fees based on what the additional road needs are, the additional wastewater, drinking water, road, all that is part, is part of the impact fees that they have to pay.
So, I'm assuming you have that down to a pretty exact size.
Well, we're, we're doing some, right now, we're doing some additional studies to, to make sure that we're, our costs are right, yes. Anybody else? All right. All right, we'll close the public hearing, look for a motion to approve ordinance number twenty-eight thirty-seven at first reading, and hold over for a second reading and adoption.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Becker?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Smith. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. All right, city council reports. Commissioner Velazquez, why don't you start us out?
Oh my God, what time is it? Almost quarter to nine. Um, the only thing I'm gonna say is that, uh, you know, I went to Saturday Sounds again. Um, I seem to be a regular attendee there. And, uh, you know, just that, uh, we have a, a great time on Saturday night.
You closed it out for me, thank you.
I did, I did. It was very nice. Um, and, uh, and this coming weekend, we're gonna have the Beatles, uh, uh, the Beatles, um, music.
Tribute.
Tribute to the Beatles, so that's a, that's something that's nice. Oh, and, and, you know, me being part of the Apopka Women's Group, I should also promote that, uh, we have the Apopka Foliage Festival coming up this weekend, so everyone is invited. Yeah. And that's, that's basically it right now, I'm tired.
Cool.
Go ahead.
I'll keep it short because we've had a long meeting tonight, but, uh, again, just following up on that, the barbecue contest, it was just a real winner
I forgot about that, yeah.
Here recently, and I thought it was especially, I know, they, they pointed out that there was another large one up in Jacksonville, but we still had a tremendous turnout, so I think this is one of those events that's just building and, and great for us.
We did enjoy, we enjoyed the Friday night, the wing
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Competition.
I want to give a big shout out to Parks and Rec. They saw the storm coming, and they wanted to make sure every act got on the stage, not all of a sudden you end, you know, and, as Commissioner Becker and I were holding down tents at six fifteen, we at least got Bailey Callahan got up to sing three or four songs, so they, they looked ahead, saw the weather was coming, and, and made the adjustment so that everybody at least got to, you know, to play, everybody, you know, got their, their time on the stage, and so hats off to the, the Parks and Rec folks for, for, you know, adjusting schedules, and not everybody was happy, you know, but, at the beginning, but then they realized when it, when everything kind of fell apart there at the end, that it was the right thing to do, so.
But I, I will say this, and this is for Commissioner Smith, uh, Ed and I sat in the truck, and coming up the hill in the storm with the wind was cool, Commissioner Smith in his suit and tie.
And one more tag along, we do have the mayor's prayer breakfast coming up the first Thursday of May, and really looking forward to that.
Commissioner Smith, how you gonna follow that up?
Well, I'm still trying to work off those wings from that Friday night. But it was an excellent event, the concert was, uh, great, even with the, uh, the weather towards the end, and I think it was very, uh, accommodating of the Parks and Rec to foresee that we needed to speed things up and move them along, so that everybody had an opportunity to perform. So it was a great event, look forward to the, uh, Foliage Festival this weekend. That's all I have.
Commissioner Becker?
Yeah, I mean, that wind wreaked havoc on my hair that day. I mean, it was pretty powerful stuff. No, that was a good time. Uh, I'll make it real quick, just, thank you for getting the HR director position posted, I saw that out there, so hopefully, I've shared it on my social media and my, my personal page, so if everybody can do that, I'm sure we'll get a good candidate pool to come back and, and get a good qualified candidate, so thank you for doing that.
All right. Okay. Next up, Edward, anything?
Um, I only have one thing I want to point out. I want to go back to Commissioner Velazquez, you had a question on the consent agenda about the disbursement report?
Yes.
And I wanted, just for clarification, doesn't change anything, but just for clarification, the utility deposits were refunds, I told you they were refunds for customers who have put refunds down, there also could be in those checks, if somebody overpaid on an account, or somebody closed an account, or left the city. If there's a balance on their account, we issue a check to them to close their account out, so some of those might not necessarily just be utility refund, deposit refunds, they could be also account refunds, I just wanted to make sure that was clear.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. Mr. Rodriguez?
Nothing to report unless you need me to add upon your, um
Yeah, while we, while we jump into, to the mayor's report, and, and, uh, I'll kind of, you should have there in front of you a letter that, um, kind of a draft from me to Teresa Jacobs, uh, I hope everybody's had a chance to take a look at it. This is kind of a collaboration between Bobby Howell and, and Michael and myself, trying to come up with something that kind of puts out there what we, you know, the frustrations we have at the city and, and some of the, you know, things that we wanted to outline. So, if you got a chance, take, hopefully you've had a chance to take a look at that, pretty much all the things we've been talking about, um, and, um, you know, kind of a pretty detailed letter, but we think that we need to, we need to at least let them know that we, we just want clarity, and that's, that's the main thing that we're asking for, is clarity, and it looks like that the legislature now is gonna reduce or limit the increases in impact fees, so every time Orange County does something, the legislature obviously has the bigger stick, is, you know, so they've come back and, and now it won't, they won't be able to raise their, their impact fees as, as high as their, their, and it goes retroactive back to January first. So I don't, you know, who knows where this is gonna end up, but, um, so it's, it's interesting, but I just wish we, we could all get on the same page as far as, you know, schools that are needed here in, in the Apopka area, so, anyway. Um, I'll, if you had a chance, you can look at that, let me, I'll go through a couple of these other things, and we'll get back, and I'll just want to make sure everybody's okay with that.
Yeah, the only, the only one call out I would make is, you know, on certain statements in here, just, there, there is a, and I, a thought that seems definitive, I just want to make sure that, that's, it's backed up with fact, you know?
Okay, sure.
If we make a representation that OCPS has this ability, or should be doing something, I just want to make sure that, you know, from a city perspective, we, we can back
We've covered, covered, yeah, covered our bases, yeah. Okay. Okay. Um, yes, prayer breakfast, May sixth, we've got a few, few tables left, um, so if you're, if you're interested, it, doors open six-thirty, uh, programs start at seven, individual tickets twenty-five dollars, uh, for, if you got a church wants a table, they're three hundred dollars, so got a few tables left to sell. Was brought up already, the Northwest Recreational Visioning Meeting, uh, hats off to Brian, his team, and as well as Kelly Robinson, who kind of put together a nice, um, uh, app, not application, a, a form that you can fill out to put on, you know, kind of where you want to put things, and so we're gonna take a look at that, and so I think we, we close out on, is it the fourteenth? Yeah, so we want to, all, any input you want, I mean, cause I can tell you when we were, we did the camp we were on, one of the things that kept popping up, which I didn't, would never have thought about, was the Frisbee Golf, and so, this is, this is for anybody to come out, and if they've got something they think is, is got, you know, there's a need out there that we're not, we're not meeting, uh, for, for our Parks and Rec Department, this is your opportunity to, to weigh in on the, the available land that we have now.
And I've been approached as well, uh, for the Frisbee Golf, that seems to be really
Yeah.
becoming popular.
So, all right. NeoWare, uh, need to put that one off a little bit, you know, the problem is, I, I try to get these things to y'all on Friday, and sometimes we, we maybe get out in front of our, you know, skis, and this is one of those that doesn't, needs a little more baking. Chief Wyland, back there in the back, yes, wake up. Just proud of him, he is one of only fifty fire chiefs who was invited out to a, a summit July twelfth through fourteenth, completely paid for by the summit organizers, so one of only fifty fire chiefs here in the country, so we're, we're really proud of the chief and, and that ability to go out to Albuquerque, New Mexico, so you should have a, I've got a letter in here from, from the Fire Chiefs Summit, so really, uh, excited about that. On-site distributed sewer system, in your, in your packet, you should have a, um, kind of interesting, I'm, I'm really excited about this, you know, we, now these, these systems probably aren't even up to full, um, nitrogen reduction, but if you look at it, right now, we're at sixty percent reduction in, in this, the, uh, we've already reduced the nitrogen by eleven-point-eight pounds, so really, really exciting, uh, news that how, how well these systems are working, so we're, you know, we'll start, this is their own in-house lab, uh, I think within the next month, we'll start to be getting, um, lab, you know, verified labs running the results for us, so really excited about, you know, our opportunity to, to save our springs, as well as give, uh, our homeowners in the Wekava Glen area, you know, a way to, to, to help, help themselves. Next up, okay, Art and Foliage Fest, we talked about this weekend, uh, opening ceremonies, nine-thirty, uh, come on down. Camp Weewah, no updates, still waiting for a survey back, uh, from the YMCA folks, you know, at some point to see where we're at. Fire Station Six, uh, we're in the budget on the, both the Senate and the House side for a million, oh-fourteen, six-twenty-three, I don't know how we got to that, but anyway. So, I'm gonna make a trip up to Tallahassee on Monday to, to, to plead with the governor who's, who's line out and vetoed this out of our budget two years in a row, so hopefully we'll, we'll get this, this funding, which will pay for half the station, so really excited about the opportunity to get this. Along with that, just so you, um, we talked about, a little bit about the, uh, the, uh, the impact fees, another, another interesting bill that is now passed is the internet tax, the, the sales tax, uh, so it's now, which will
Something that
Bring additional dollars to, to the city, uh, next, next budget year. What they've done, um, from the state side is, um, they didn't want to, it's, it's about a billion dollars in additional revenue, what they're gonna do, the first couple of years, they're gonna use the state's dollars, not the city's dollars, they're gonna use those dollars to reduce the unemployment compensation increase, because it was gonna be, gonna more than double, so for all those small businesses, their unemployment tax would have more than doubled, so what the state's gonna do is take the dollars they were, would have gotten from the internet tax, and use that to, to pay down the, the business owner's, um, internet tax, I mean, their, their
Unemployment.
Unemployment tax. When that's completed, when they get, when we get back to, to normal, which hopefully in the next two years, we'll be back to normal on, on that unemployment tax, then the money then will go to reduce the commercial rent, because, I don't know if you know that, but, but, you know, when you rent a, an office building, or, or in a strip mall, you pay sales tax. They've, they've begun to whittle away at that sales tax, uh, cost, but this, this, their, the state dollars then will go toward really trying to drive down that, that cost of the rent tax. So, anyway, um, and then last but not least, I think I've got everything on here, yeah, so, um, as y'all know, we have been working hard, well, we've been working, um, on, you know, some kind of a resolution to the Rock Springs Ridge, um, golf course, Mr. De La Russo, and so, um, I can't tell you how many meetings I've had with, well, I guess had one or two with Mr. De La Russo, but with his partner Chad, and with the attorneys, and, and so we've, we've, we had a meeting last week and just got it confirmed today from their, their group, um, as you can see, they came up with an idea for a swap, um, of, we have the two properties on Harmon Mode, Road, which we had, we were kind of earmarking for the replacement for Camp Weewah, we were gonna use those dollars to buy Camp Weewah. So what the, the De La Russo team would like to do is to, for us to, to donate, or to give them those two pieces of property in exchange for the golf course. So as you can see, the two properties, we just had them appraised, um, just this year, uh, two-point-five-four-eight-five million dollars. Just the, we, just the note is that we, one drawback we have about, if we, if we were to go through with this, is that the city, we have a, a communications tower that's on its last leg, as Rob would tell you, um, it's, I mean, so we're, we would need to move that tower somewhere else, um, it, it, it's maybe three years, probably at the outside, so it's not like we're, we're taking down a perfectly good tower, but, um, so here's kind of what we're, you know, Michael and I have been working on, would, is that, uh, the city would, would lease back the golf course, um, in, in exchange for those two pieces of property in Harmon, the city would get the golf course. What we would then simultaneously do is we would lease back the golf course to the Rock Springs Ridge homeowners at six thousand a month, until Rock Springs Ridge can secure a loan or bond through a recreational district. So basically, recreational district, if, if they were to start tomorrow, it wouldn't be, they couldn't accomplish it until the next tax year, it'd be next November is when that would go into place, they could probably bond as soon as they got a recreational district put into place, but that's, um, I mean, I think the, makes the most sense if they want to do it. Now, a lot of the things that they've been talking about, the homeowners have been talking about, is, is the ambiguity on the, the property zonings, and so what we would like to do in that, in that interim, while the property is being leased to the HOA, the homeowners could elect to create the recreational district in order to bond the purchase of the course from the city, which would show up on your tax bill each year versus as a homeowner bill. The, the good news about that is that regardless if you, if you didn't pay your homeowners association, you can walk away from that, whereas if it's on your tax bill, it would go to the next, whoever bought that property then. While the city has the title of the golf course property, the city would administratively amend the future land use designation of the golf course from residential to recreational in order to preserve its current use as a recreational amenity. So such a land use map amendment would also include administratively amending the designations for the other residential uses in order to have the map designations of the remaining parcels correspond with the existing residential density of the plan development. So right now is, is, what we've got is we've got some overbuilt in the one-to-one, um, zoned properties at Rock Springs Ridge, we are underzoned for the, the two-to-one lots. So, what we'd like to do is want to clean this all up, we have lots out there where you've got two zoning in this, across the same lot, so you might have a one-to-one zoning on the back part of the lot, and, and two-to-one on the front part of the lot, so we're gonna clean all that up if this were to, to go through in that, in that interim. Just as, just for a reference, uh, the cost to each of the thirteen-hundred-and-twenty homeowners in Rock Springs Ridge for twenty years would be at three-point-five percent, hundred-and-thirty-two dollars a year, if you were to stretch it out to thirty years, it would, at three-point-five percent, a hundred-and-two dollars per year. Um, if, if Rock Springs Ridge were to rebuild this golf course, um, I mean, I'd be willing to give them what we call is a TIF, Tax Incremental Financing, for five years, uh, which would be basically say that any of the value, increased value above their current market value, and I would just, and I'm picking a number, three-hundred-and-fifty-thousand, it's probably a little more than that, but if you take three-hundred-and-fifty-thousand, and you increase the property values by three percent, which, if you, if you're a homeowner, that's all you can go up because of Save Our Homes, then that would generate the first year right at sixty thousand dollars, then would go up by three percent every year, so the five years would generate about three-hundred-and-fifteen-thousand dollars to pay for golf course operating costs. So, this is kind of the plan, you know, that, that's been presented to us, and, and so it's, it's, you know, want to at least get your input, uh, we're gonna have a, a community meeting next Tuesday, um, at, uh, six o'clock, I think it's six o'clock next Tuesday at the amphitheater for all the residents, it, it will be noticed, Susan will notice it, so commissioners come, you can ask questions, um, and so we're, 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 we're at the point
Is this next Tuesday?
Yes. Amphitheater, six o'clock. It'll go in the, uh, the Apopka Chief on Friday.
Next Tuesday is, uh, what date is that?
Twenty-seven.
The twenty-seven?
Yes.
Oh, because they had said that the HOA meeting was changed to May eighteenth, so this is
Okay.
All right, so this is Tuesday.
So, any questions? You know? Oh, it's a lot, it's a lot, I mean, and it's, and it's not, quite honestly, it's, we're basically the intermediary, we're not, you know, my, my big hangup is making sure that Rock Springs Ridge actually owns it, I don't, we don't need to be on the hook for, you know, a, a golf course that we don't want.
So, so here would be my, and these are just
Sure.
Open-ended questions, not to solve here, because we probably don't have the answers here, the, the questions that jumped to mind
Sure.
Um, I'm assuming this deal is for this land at this value, because there's intrinsic upside to that value, this isn't a offer to the residents of Rock Springs for that same price, does that make sense? Meaning, if you took us out of the equation, because in all honesty, the city has no vested interest in this property.
Correct.
Right? So, if, if we removed ourselves from a city perspective, and Mr. De La Russo had a conversation with the Rock Springs Ridge HOA, is there an idea that there would be, it would be the same offer amount? And so, and that, and again, we don't have to answer it here, but
And it was, it, it's crazy to me, I, to me, I would just take the cash, but he's, he wants property, and I, I'm like, I mean, and I wouldn't sell, I wouldn't make the swap based on the land value less or more, it, that's what it appraised at, so
Right, yeah, and the appraised amount, because we're, we have to kind of stick to that, right?
Correct.
And, but there's going to be upside, especially if he puts
Sure, absolutely.
You know, higher density product, whatever the case might be on that particular property. So, and then, another question would be, okay, so we've got a lease amount back to the city of six thousand a month, does that fully cover any operating costs to keep it a nuisance-free environment that we would have to then keep ourselves?
No, we're gonna lease it back to them, so they're gonna
Lease it back to them, and they would be on, even though we, we would technically own it
But
In the lease agreement, it would be, okay.
Up, up to them to
They would maintain.
And then, you know, and I don't know the history of the Rock Springs Ridge HOA, and, you know, how often they reach quorum on anything, any of their meetings, and so, some, a decision like this, obviously, would be dependent upon what the pleasure of that community, because I
Correct.
We can't just do this and say, oh, by the way, you're on the hook
Correct.
For six thousand dollars, they've got to agree to these terms.
Correct.
And what's our confidence factor that they're gonna be a willing participant?
Right, and I think Tuesday, we want to get, we want to get a good feel, like, is this something you want to do, or do we go back to, you know, to the courts? And that's kind of where we're at with that.
Yeah, because for that amount, divided by the 1,320, the nominee that you have here, you know, from an assessment standpoint, if the HOA just handled it themselves, it's $1,882. So just, you know, something to think about too, because you could do a one-time assessment versus doing all these, you know, yearly kind of things too, so, a lot of questions.
Yeah, no, I agree.
I'll be interested to see what their feedback is.
Matter of fact, I got a call, I guess it was after lunch today, is when the folks from De La Russo said, okay, you know, that's something we can live with, so.
And then too, what's not on here, the last point, is, you know, if they do decide to rebuild, obviously, I get what you're saying with the TIF and the operating costs, but, you know, just the reshaping, rebuilding costs would probably, I'm just throwing a number out there, it's probably upwards of 2, 3 million bucks.
Probably more like 4 or 5, yeah. And just so that everybody understands, you know, that part, the bottom, you know, the TIF, if Arrow State were to figure out a way to do the same thing, we would be, I'd be more than willing to do the same thing with them if they wanted to rebuild the golf course. I would be more than happy to have two good golf courses in Apoca, and give them that same TIF for the five years, but.
I'll look forward to Tuesday.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Commissioner Smith?
I guess my concern is, if Mr. De La Russo don't have any developmental rights, then why are we giving him land that is developer? It doesn't seem like it's apples to apples to me.
There's probably some truth in there. I guess, you know, hanging it over our heads, like, there's always the chance, I mean, you know, is it 10 or 15% chance that he could win in court? Based on, you know, Burt Harris, you know, there's some, there's some pretty far-reaching Burt Harris bills in the legislature that will give property owners additional rights. I haven't looked at them specifically, see, you know, I'd love to be able to just close this thing out. If the homeowners are willing to pony up for 2.4 million bucks, I'm willing to be the intermediary. But it's for them to sell, not me.
Okay, that was one more question.
Yeah, no, I'm with you 100%. If the homeowners don't think this is of value to them, that to take De La Russo out of that, then, then we keep fighting along, you know, forever. But, I mean, I'm hoping we can, you know, this would be, this one shot at resolution, and if the homeowners, you know, want to, you know, keep, we can keep fighting as well. I know that somebody, I've heard that the attorney fees already, they've already spent this year, you've spent 100 and, north of $125,000. So there's a, you know, some reason to try to settle, but, so anyway. It's got some value, but, yeah, we'll find out on Tuesday. Commissioner Banks?
Yeah, I just appreciate all that have put in the work to create an option here, and I'm just looking forward to hear what the will of the people is, because that's their community. It's nice to have an option.
Commissioner Velazquez?
Well, it is my community, so, yeah, I mean, let's see what happens at the HOA meeting, but I'm, again, I'm gonna kind of echo what Commissioner Becker says. If he's willing to take these two properties that add up to 24, 2,485,000, why wouldn't he sell it to us at that price? Why did he need to take our property? And why are we all, yeah, I mean, that's been the whole-
Well, if you're asking me, I'd rather get rid of the property. I mean, that doesn't take cash out of our bank account, but I mean, it's-
But it's property that we've had, that we could, like you said, you wanted to kind of have it as the recreation.
Correct. No, I agree, I mean, the only, the one worry I have, if, if, you know, depending on what happens with Camp Weewah, you know, the bigger piece of property on Harmon was going to be our recreational site. And we even have $200,000 that we were awarded under a FERDA grant to improve that for fields and whatnot. So we'd have to replace, if we did this deal, and we didn't get Camp Weewah, then we would, we would have to immediately start to look for property in that southwest region to make sure we keep our recreational acres to constituents. So that, that is a potential problem, absolutely. But I think, I think Camp Weewah, we shouldn't, you know, knock on wood, I think we should know in the next, for sure in the next 30 days, and I'm not, and I'm almost positive we won't get this done in the next 30 days, but hopefully relatively soon.
All right, I mean, that's, again, we'll discuss that, I guess, at the HOA meeting. But I just found that interesting, that he all of a sudden is willing to sell at this price. And I think that was something that the Rock Springs Ridge was looking for, was a fair price. Because initially, he was asking-
Oh, yeah, 6 million, or whatever the number was.
And so now he's come to a fair price.
Correct.
But we have to give up, and I mean, we, the city, has to give him two pieces of property, instead of him selling it directly to them.
Well, we're not giving him any, we're not giving him anything.
Well, the land swap, I should say, but we're still, we still are involved.
Correct, oh, I wish we weren't involved either, but, I mean, I would love to be-
I mean, I live in Rock Springs Ridge.
Sure, I understand.
You know, I'd be the first one to say, go ahead, let the city swap. But for me, it's just the fact that he's now willing to sell this at a fair price.
Well, I mean, I think part of it is, I think, I think he wants this thing over as well, as much as, I mean, his attorney costs more than your attorney, I bet you. So I think, I think there's, a lot of attorneys, the only guys getting rich right now are the attorneys on both sides. And so we had a pretty frank discussion on, what day was that, Michael?
Was it Thursday, I think?
Thursday or Friday, and we're talking about it, and it got down to, you know, they could, they talked about, well, we could, we could have you tear down 40 houses because you're above, in the one-to-one, you could tear down 40 houses to meet the, you know, you're above your threshold there. And, and so Michael says, well, yeah, you're right, and that would be great for, you know, Del Air, is to say, yeah, we just, we just threw 40 people out of their houses and mowed their house down. And so, you know, that's, that's not, that's not productive. And then we said, man, we could shut the restaurant down, so, you know, it, you know, then we got better from there. It went uphill from there, and so we got, I think we, you know, came to something that, you know, it's an option, if the homeowners want it, I would sure like to put this thing behind me, and-
So would I, there's 16 years?
Yeah, exactly, so, anyway.
All right, well, thank you.
All right, well, with that, we will close the City-